So right now, I think it's like a touchscreen. And it's, um, so then you like just touch like St. Mary's ambulance, St. Mary's fire department, whatever, or, and it would add an additional module, call all.
Call all.
So they wouldn't have to, yeah. They would plug in, um, again, make all the numbers and, and Tony kept calling it a call all touch icon on their touchscreen. So they wouldn't have to go through and select them all. And that's why I think it's just a couple of grand, because it's, it's basically just a, a, a module on there.
I was wondering if that was going to be available for TMSA and, uh, one of the other departments.
So I think they, yeah, they'd be included. So it's, like I said, my understanding is, it's for the dispatchers to save those few seconds or minutes or whatever, calling each department individually.
If they get bit further, you could hit the one button, call everybody.
Yep, and let everybody know at the same time where, what it is and where they need to be. And then it's a big one or whatever, and everybody needs to show up. Um, and I think it's, that's kind of what they did with, um, the, the fire out here mystery. I forget his name, Jerome?
Yeah, Jerome.
Yeah, so I think that's kind of when they decided it would've been nice to have that. I mean, it would've shaved off a little bit of time.
Yeah, the whole county would represent.
Because the whole county showed up there, yeah.
You read this?
That's what we're talking about now?
Yeah.
Did I scan it?
Read the, read the last page.
I don't know that I have it. Let me see. I'm trying to make myself happy. Oh, right, that did come in at the last minute. Okay.
This was the project made this afternoon?
I do.
Yeah, so again, she had all of her stuff prepared and then that call came in Friday.
See, I don't know, uh, their request, I, I have no idea what we're at on that.
Um, I am not as well schooled in that, because it came in Friday afternoon and that's why it didn't get in the scanned packet, which is what I'm looking at.
And she's probably never, she's probably not up to speed on it even.
I don't think so, because like I said, it just came in, but she, she said, "I'm gonna write up something and talk to them about it." So again, it looks like we probably haven't done for one. And I already forgot how many they're requesting.
Oh, that's one, so I, I, I think we need to talk to her and see.
Okay.
Of course, I think they're, I, I don't know, maybe Bobby knows. Are they on, is the tri- one on our system? They're not, are they?
No, not that I know of. I've never been, heard them on there or been a sponsor on there. They can contact, uh, the sheriff's office on that.
But they're on their own system then?
For, uh, for the radios?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure they are, they're on, uh, I think they went all to seven hundred megahertz and were what, one hundred megahertz, you know, man, about.
Tony from the sheriff's office might know as well, on the back tower.
They put it something called a gateway someplace that they can, uh, that contact, yeah.
I would assume so too. I would, yeah, I would think that there's some way for them to tell us and our dispatchers to call out.
They're in communication with each other somehow.
Yeah.
Well, we'll let her look at that request.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
Because we don't, we can't answer them, because we don't know.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't know what the tri- runs.
And I'm not sure what those inquiry Peters are supposed to do. Yes, we have a little more information on it.
Yeah, we do, because we, they need to be in contact.
Sheriff's office showed up trying to get sixty thousand bucks out of us. We barely do that, so I'm not even worried about this one.
Yeah. So I, 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 we want to be fair, but you gotta know what, gotta know what being fair is, and I don't think you know that.
No, we don't want you to.
You know? You, you might call City Hall and if Roletto's over there, he can come over.
Yeah. Is that where we're at? So you guys just want a, a table in the nine AM, Lynn's Emergency Management? Okay. Okay, and? Let me, let me make sure he's not out.
He might be too.
Yeah, he might be. Hi, this is Dee, the courthouse. Does Jim Roletto happen to be down there? Do you know? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Bye bye. He wasn't out front and he's.
I can deal with calling himself.
Yeah.
And I also do have, um, stuff, I guess, to present for the assessor and the treasurer too while we're waiting. So you should have the statement of treasures cash from Sarah. So she just is required to report that monthly to you guys. So it's as of February twenty eighth and, um, all told, we have seven point five million dollars cash on hand. I don't know if you guys want to talk about the different funds and what money they have. See on here, there's a, there's just a couple in the hole right now. One is golf course, so we're starting the season off in the hole. But once they start collecting fees, that should, that should jump us back out. And I'm not sure, I haven't talked with Chuck yet to see what he thought for equipment repairs this year. Hopefully, it'll be an easy year for that, because that's what usually gets us off kilter. And then, of course, um, the loody building. I did, uh, DIPCO did come and fix those, uh, two units that replaced the motors in those. Didn't replace the units, just the motors. And we'll see how that holds up, but I, I've been only budgeting just minimal for loody building, because, you know, there's no funds there. But then I'll just, once the agent's office moves in there, I'll just shift all those to the, to the county building fund.
Jim's on his way.
Okay.
Okay. And it looks like those are the only ones in the hole, but overall, we have seven point five.
Okay, and, uh, we do have forty thousand in there for sewer construction.
Um.
We do?
Yeah.
So we could do one?
That's what it says right here.
Okay.
We're on county sewer construction.
Okay.
There are sixteen of those to do.
Sixteen?
Sixteen of those pump stations.
Thirteen, actually. How many pump is it?
Thirteen, I think, and then two, two are replaced.
I always want to say thirteen, but then it's like, I thought I heard fourteen or fifteen before, but maybe that's because two are replaced and there's thirteen left, or is there?
I think we start out with thirteen.
Thirteen total?
It might be sixteen, but some of those tools might be in state.
Okay.
I think that's what it is. Yeah, we do have some in there.
Do we have more on that?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Could be that.
Do we need to, on, on that rock crushing on the Benoit, do we need to put that out for, for bids with the, with, uh, with the rock included in that and with the rock not included?
I think we need to put it out to the, to crushing contractors to put up the three-quarter base, yeah. I think we better go get, I think we go before quotes, you know, get the people who do it around here. And get, give them a chance and give a few others a chance. And this ERF money can work that way, contractor you work with and, and also. Yeah, I thought we should go do that, get a competitive prize, pick the, pick the low bid, because they're all good. And then we'll guarantee them a certain amount, but then we'll see how the money works out. We might put up more based on the bid, if it's good, put up a little more and stay underneath your threshold.
You better including the stoppage and not including the stoppage.
Um, do you need the trees instead?
No.
No, no.
The cost of the rock.
The cost of the rock. I suggest we go both ways.
Oh, so you mean like the, the royalty kind of thing?
There's contractors that have pits.
Oh, oh, I'll do it, yeah, we can do it that way if you want.
And so then if the cost is where it should be, if it isn't, then, or, we have one that's seventy-five cents, is it seventy-five cent? We have one that's seventy-five cents.
Okay. Yeah. It should, it should be a tough source to beat, beans right there, right?
Well, there's one right there that's a rock crusher guy.
Okay.
That has a pit up there.
Is there, is there room for storage there also?
Uh, no, there isn't.
Yeah, that makes it really tough.
Yeah.
Because then they need to have two.
We could say that it has to be stockpiled at a certain site, put up there, so that haul would have to be included. Yeah, we can do it that way.
Is, uh, is that a good certified or anything?
It's same, same stuff, but I don't, it's not certified, because it's a new pit.
And, and that was.
There's three of them up there, really. And then there's one in Alder Creek, which he has.
Are they almost there the basalt too?
That's basalt, isn't it, in all that parts? Or is it, or is that a?
It's just basalt, but it's, uh, it's not a real, not real solid. As it get in there deeper, it gets more, but it's just, right now, we're just digging out of the hillside.
The, uh, the reason we, um, we're working with, with that owner is because in the area of the project, it's the only one that was already pre-approved by ITD. Just for timing, you know, and all. Because some would have trouble getting all that in line, you know, if we said, you gotta have this kind of LA wear, you gotta have this kind of Idaho day, you know, the cleanness. They might have trouble getting all that done in time for our project. But we can do it that way, and we can put some stipulation running.
How about for the earth project, we use the sole source we have, and if we need to do some more crushing, we do something else.
Well, but you, we.
I'm just looking at timeline, because.
That's your, that's the reason that we, since.
It's coming up on April here, end of the week.
Right.
And we need to have our pressure, crushing bits put out within the next, uh.
This is, you know, we are up against it, I think, time-wise.
Just, um, that money has to be spent by.
Yeah, we've got to be done this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, it takes time to get that approved. If, if we wanted it approved through the ITD process, we don't have time. If we just wanted the materials testing done, that's about a month out. We just did one month to five weeks out, um, before they would know if their material met.
What takes so long to do that?
The, the guys that do it. So, um, we send that out, most, there's a, there's an LA wear and an Idaho day test, and those only done like two or three labs. One in Tri-Cities, there is one in Boise, um, and Lewiston, it's just when we call them up, they say, "Here's how long it is." So we sample it, ship it, and then they want four weeks.
So I, there's two or three contracts, but the one contract that does, does a lot of crushing, a lot of crushing, so he would probably, I don't know if he'd even be in the category, but, uh, and the other one, the other, there's, well, there's, there's four.
I, I thought you should pick your, the four that you've used before. This money can be, this is like emergency money, so it's like, what is the regular practice for the local entity? And if these are guys you use and it's a source that's approved that you've used before, that fits right in there. But I thought we get kind of a, a one-page quote thing, and we get them out to those guys, get some competitive part of that, and make them, make them give the county the best deal, and we roll with it, because they're all good at it. And it's three-quarter base, pretty simple. And, um, we tell them how much we want, we tell them where we want it piled, and, uh, it would come down to, are we gonna say, um, you know, to be awarded, you have to prove that you meet these quality tests. And it's gonna take them three weeks to bid it anyway, maybe by that time, if they run and get their tests going at the same time.
How many yards do we want to put out, up for?
At least, I'm thinking at least thirty-five thousand. At least, I think it's more like fifty.
That'd be, that'd be for the earth.
Yes, you have that much. You have more than that, I think. We'll have to see what the price is, but you'll be able to put up fifty, I'm pretty sure.
It's a timeline, you think you guys need that rock out there?
Uh?
We'll start as soon as we can.
We need rock like we need water, lots of it.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, you're gonna try utilize it this summer, right?
Well, we want to stock.
It's, it's gotta be utilized this summer.
Yeah.
And that's why we're kind of up against the timeline right now, and, uh, we've been working with that one pit there most winter, and, and I think we should just move forward with the one, with sole source for the earth money, just, just so we don't get ourselves in a position where we run out of time.
It feels that way to me also, because, uh, we, last year, we did very little, and that's when the money became available, and so we really need to get after it, um, now. But that's all, it's still competitive, you know what it's gonna be, um, we'll get, we'll get good prices and we'll look straight there. So we do have, we do have an agreement, Dolby Mariah or close to an agreement, or?
Or purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement and.
There's two separate agreements that we've been working on. One is a purchase agreement, it's a per yard price to purchase rock. And then another is a storage agreement, per yard price or some price that hasn't been negotiated as far as I know, to store the rock for as long as the county needs to store. So it's broken into two agreements. We prepared.
Well, there is a, there is a spot to store that rock, it's right at Alder Creek. Right, right, you see the pit there at Alder Creek, where you turn in to Alder Creek? It's off to the left?
Do it on the bottom there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could probably use that.
We could look it up there, yeah.
We probably could, I don't, I, so, what I'm saying, if we're hung swaggled on the one, or the rock set, we could probably use that.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, I think the concept is, is we get it all crushed, stockpiled, get as much out there this year that, as we can, great, and then we have the rest of it, um, for, uh, the following timeframe, and, and, you know, we've made that pretty clear to, um, the guys from Emergency Services how it's gonna go, so.
We'll put it out and see what we get.
Okay, so I think the other day, are we gonna move forward with, with hers, I guess, where Rock and Road, either use it or we don't, doesn't matter. Then if we do finalize that agreement, at least we have them.
Yeah, we need to finalize that.
I think we need to finalize that agreement and then just see what happens.
Well, we need to, actually, before we put out bids for the rock crushing, we actually don't need, don't know where we're gonna get the rock. And beans, that was a central location, that was a real important part of that whole, securing the rock there, because it's central for the project for the Benoit.
Right, I think that if you have another place to store, like if there's a place at Alder Creek, and somebody wants to bring it from somewhere else and pile it there, we could leave that available in our bid.
We don't actually have, we don't own anything there at Alder Creek, so we may be able to work with.
We probably need to.
Thing of it is, the, I've been stepping around you a little bit, but one of the contractors has offered to, the, the fee for the rock at a, at hardly nothing.
Yeah.
If they could get the contract, but you don't know that, that he could allow for bid, and you don't know they might raise the price of the rock to offset that, so, I meant, it might not mean nothing.
Okay.
But it's.
We can put it out that includes them. We can put it out that doesn't say it has to come from Rock and Road, does not have to, okay? It can, the contract, if a crushing contractor wants to give us a bid to go into Rock and Road, put it up there, and stockpile it where we tell them, they can do that. If another contractor wants, say, "I've got some ideas," um, we will leave, we need another site, probably, or we can just tell them it could go on, on theirs. We could say that it is put up here, even if it doesn't come from that source. Does not have to come from that source, it just needs to come from a source that, that meets those same qualities, you know? Which is, so, uh, that's healthy, you know?
So we got, going up to St. Mary's River, we got that pile of asphalt, so we, we need to talk to them crushers about that.
Yeah.
Because then that can go on up to St. Mary's River, so.
Oh, yeah.
That should do us, and that should get the whole, whole road on St. Mary's River as far as rock grab.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I like that idea. It's a rack, putting it in as rack, correct? Yeah, that's it, and that's gonna save the cost, and having it there is a good deal. Good deal for us, so the county gets a better price and we go further. I think, it feels like we're moving pretty good with LTAC and ITD on that bid. I think as of last week, it was over at ITD looking for a date to go to advertise, and thanks to your guys' help, we're, it looks like we're gonna make it. We got prioritized, if you will. So, um, we're looking for a bid date for that to come out, which would be great.
So when you put out to bid for the crushing companies, how much should we put out for them? Fifty thousand yards or?
I was thinking we would say, we want a price per yard and say a minimum of thirty-five, and we could say a minimum of forty. Knowing that we'll at least put that up, and, um, then if we like the price, we'll put up some more. That's not so uncommon, you know? They want to know a minimum for their MOB costs and all that, so we say, that's who we'll put. But, yeah, fifty, we're gonna be able to do fifty, I'm just being conservative with the numbers, we're gonna be able to do that. I assumed you might want to do some A chloride, we had talked one time, so you have to decide how you spend your money, but your money is gonna be for materials.
Includes A chloride.
Includes A chloride.
How much money about?
About seven hundred thousand for materials, and that's conservative, again, I took some out and did some, don't want to be wrong. Yes, we'll be, uh, we'll be able to take care of that. So I, I get what you're saying, let's get it out to bid, but it's, it does, it's open enough that, um, that if someone can hustle and get it approved, and someone's got a better idea, and someone is willing to, you know, kind of get the price there and figure out the haul, um, if someone can come in at, at a better deal than the central location of that Rock and Road, well, good for us, right? Good for the county.
Yeah.
So we'll leave that open.
You're gonna crush it all with three quarter in the last?
That's what I was thinking, that we would crush.
That's what we need most of anything out there is some, some.
It's supposed to be for surfacing too, the scope of the work is, is three-quarter.
You had a couple bad spots, I think, there. Did you get that?
We, we left the words, Mariah, we left the words in there that say, "Some pit run" at the same cost royalty. So I mean, there is a, there is the ability to go dig out.
We're doing some, some that way, so you got some for a little. And we still have access to, to other, uh, sources up there in Benoit also. Uh, there's, Benoit there on Alder Creek is pretty good material.
So we got from where he quit rock and to the, to the Benoit Road, that's the last we got to do on Alder Creek, isn't it?
Uh, for.
For rock, for base. I mean, that road is.
Yeah.
I mean, good, and they, where'd he quit it? Did he quit it at the Swirbers, right in there?
Uh, no, it's more closer to, uh, Baker's old place.
Okay.
You know, I'm just not sure. It was about two miles they did, and, uh, there's a few sauce pots every year show up.
Yeah, boy, it's good though, compared to what.
Yeah, we, we still.
The one to work on though is Alder Creek Loop here eventually, that's gotta have some work done to it, because it's real narrow and it seemed like.
It does, but it don't have the.
Every year, another five houses go in there.
Public, uh, don't have the people in there like you do in the other direction.
There's a lot of houses on Alder Creek Loop anymore too, but.
You know, we had some money that was through FEMA for four or five spots that we need to finish this year. We asked for an extension, we got it, so we need to go take care of those times.
On the Benoit Road itself.
I can't, you know, I'm sorry, I don't have them in my head, but Alder Creek was one of them. And Erickson was one of them that we didn't spend at all. I think in your district, I think in three or a couple, we might not have spent at all.
Oh, okay, and that's countywide?
Yes, countywide. We, we put in for those, those FEMA, we got several, we finished some, and then we're near end of last year, we asked for an extension and they gave it to us, so this year we need to finish those. Some are more than others, but in the thirty-two, forty grand type range, and, um, if we do it with our in-kind services, we get reimbursed for that wood. So we've done some of that already.
Why don't you look those up and get back to us somewhere, where those are, just right away, so we don't, uh, get halfway through the summer and say, "Oh my gosh, we gotta get that done."
Yeah.
Jeff, you could let me know which ones are.
I will, I'll, I'll send, I'll send that to you. I have talked with your foreman already when we're asking for those extensions, but we will, we don't want to miss those, this is our opportunity to get them, and we, we'll make sure, make sure your guys are out there and we're getting. Because what it really is, is a reimbursement of, of your efforts is what it is, so, materials and. I'll bring those up and make sure we're on that, and get a bid for, for the other.
What have we got this afternoon?
I'm not sure, we haven't had uni for our one o'clocker, I don't know, they're all coming though, either been, pretty much better be there. I don't know.
I've been to call, uh, Susan.
Oh, she's coming, she told me.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I didn't get the call into her, end of the week, I'm real busy for a meeting. I wanted to touch base with her before the meeting, so.
We know her, she'll be late.
You know, she's getting here, the last time she got here, we had lunch together, and that retired.
Oh, okay. She asked for a ride, and I told her she'd have to come really early if she wanted to see you guys, but, yeah, well, we'll get through that, all right.
So permission is just on the, on the agenda, so we're clear. The action is that we're gonna put up, that, let us kind of put out a bid for the procurement of the rock, including the source. And we're not doing a sole source declaration today.
Right, no sole source, just see what's in there, see if we can get rid of the open. What do you do have a motion, Mariah?
It'd be best to do it with a motion.
Pretty much, it's a rock out of the ditch. Okay.
What about the, the agreement with?
I was trying to clarify, it sounds like that's not moving forward today.
I think I'd like to move forward with that one agreement, just so we have a source there.
I guess we have, why not?
Yeah.
It's, it's like having it, having it just in case.
We, we've been working on that for the last two months, you and I, and.
Yeah.
Just so we have it, and they can go back on it.
Right, it is, the one thing about it is, it looks like it will be a pretty competitive opportunity if a contractor wants to go there. We wanna make sure any contractor could go there, whether they're best or not.
And the price of the whole project is not that much anyway.
No, the royalty to that?
Yeah. Thirty-five, forty thousand?
So, Commissioner, the contract that we've been working on, it does not have a minimum amount in there, it does not set a price, it has other terms in there, but it does not specifically says, "She'll not be required to purchase any specific amount or any minimum amount of rock, of materials under this agreement." So, it's pretty open ended as far as that.
Well, we can, you can wait till somebody wins, but...
You know, I will go ahead and approve that purchase agreement there.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That way we have that secure.
Just in case, yeah. I'll get something together, all right?
Where are we going now, D?
BLM, that's where.
Yeah, I haven't seen anyone out there yet. I did, Donna did want me to tell you guys too, that when she starts her, the tax roll, I think they start that in April or May, she'll have, I think she said about four casualty losses, and that's due to the, there's been several catastrophic fires. So, but she doesn't have an exact amount, so she'll have some cancellations for you guys to approve until she sets the roll.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to let you know that she had those. She also wanted me to ask you guys about, so she's bought a couple of new vehicles, well, new used vehicles as well. So, there are some, what we call them salvage vehicles parked around the courthouse and in some of our lots up there, down there. She didn't know.
We should probably take them down to county, put them behind the fence, figure out what we're gonna do with them.
Down at the airport or at Jeff Shop, or what?
Jeff Shop.
Jeff Shop, okay. Yeah, she just wasn't sure what, leave them parked there, or what you guys wanted to do with them?
They're not gonna use them anymore, are they?
No, she's done with them. I'm not even sure that, I don't remember how many she said, two, at least two, if not three.
I've seen them sitting around there, snow pile on top of them.
Yeah. I'm not sure if they all run either, but if they do, obviously we can move them, and if they don't, well, you can move them.
I'll just get, figure out some way to move forward, get rid of them.
So, that, yeah, that's what I didn't know, we...
We need to call the other counties like they're suggesting, and ask them if they are interested in them for the airports, like what we're doing with ours, or something else. All, just go around our five northern counties, or ten, and offer them to them.
Okay.
They may not want them, but it, cause you won't get nothing.
Okay.
It's a better be, to the taxpayers than to give away.
Okay, and I'll see what she has, I'll get the year and the model, and if she thinks they're running, and then maybe, I don't know, that we need them for ours, seems like we have quite a few airport courtesy cars right now.
Yeah.
And they all seem to be running at the moment. Okay. Oh, and then, so back up under Jim Leto, the second item was the sole source declaration, so no action was taken on that one.
Beautiful drive, as usual.
Shoot, I'm ordering.
I do. No, I came from Long River, yeah. Would anybody else like?
I would like one, thank you.
Okay.
As long as I have one for myself, I'll talk off.
Who are you?
My name's Kurt Padlet. Yes, I'm with the BLM. Anyone else like in the end? I have one left.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Two.
Okay. I thought you were gonna be tougher and not be here this year.
That's next. The plan is December.
Okay.
Now, you're still stuck with me until December.
That's okay, it's not bad.
Okay. Well, yeah. Again, it's a pleasure to be here. Always nice to come down here to St. Mary's. Wish I could spend more time here. Very routine, you're seeing pretty much the same thing year after year for me. As far as timber sales, and I'll just, please interrupt me at any time if you have any questions, that's perfectly fine. Timber sales, we're working on this line on the West Fork Pine Creek. We're excited about that, it's gonna, it's big, we're gonna carve it up into several sales. And looking at probably twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, starting that game plan, we'll haul out Pine Creek. So, anyway, that's gonna be probably a couple thousand acres that we're looking at logging in there. We have good access right now, and so I think it's gonna be a nice, a series of nice sales coming out there. I, seems like Idaho Forest Group, they're bidding, they're about the only game in town right now for a lot of our sales. If we put up sales north of Coeur d'Alene, sometimes Logan Brothers will bid on those. Tricon, used two out of St. Regis, but they were bought out by IMG.
Oh, right.
They were, yeah, I think it was last year, I believe that they were purchased. And again, we have a great relationship with Idaho Forest Group, they do good work, they hire bid loggers. And so we have no complaints. We just think competition's a good thing, it's good to have more than one outfit bidding on timber sales. In terms of public land, BLM manage public land within Benoit County. It's approximately fourteen thousand acres, we don't expect that to change. It's, will probably remain that for years and years. Recreation, that's one of our, that's our other big program in addition to forestry and timber management. We have a lot of sites around Coeur d'Alene. The one down here on the St. Joe is our Huckleberry Campground. And we do try to utilize local vendors as much as we can to pump the vaults, to do any maintenance, the saw shop, for instance. So, we do try to do that as much as we can. We're a small outfit, so we don't have the capability to do a lot of the work, so we contract that out. We are upgrading our Huckleberry Campground this fall, and we're gonna upgrade the electrical from twenty-five amp to fifty amp to primarily accommodate these humongous motorhomes that show up and they have their air conditioner, color TV and all that stuff. They blow fuses, so we're gonna try to get that upgraded to fifty amp this fall, after Labor Day. So, once the main rush of folks are over. So, that's a game plan there. We're also going to upgrade our water system and put in a dump station for our campground hosts specifically. So that they can just stay right there, keep their trailer right there. We're also going to our reservation system there at Huckleberry for twenty-nine of the thirty-three sites. It's just gotten to the point now where there, that campground has been discovered, and it is, it's crazy. And I think it would, and we're gonna work to get the word out to people. The last thing we want is to somebody to drive all the way down there who are unaware of the reservation system, and they get there and find out, oh, my gosh, all the, all the sites are reserved already. So, we're gonna try to get that out, through local newspapers, via press releases and the like, internet, and try to get the word out that Huckleberry Campground, at least twenty-nine of the thirty-three sites in there will be reserved under that reservation system, and it will be reservation.gov, I believe. Yeah, I'm sorry, recreation.gov, which is apparently all the federal recreation folks, park service, forest service, BLM, we use that website for campground reservations. So, we're, but we'll have four that'll be first come, first served. And I threw in this Blackwell thing as well. I know it's up there in Cooby County there on Lake Coeur d'Alene. Very popular boat launch, and we're putting in these machines, point-of-sale machines, that's where, and I consider myself pretty old-fashioned, but I don't even carry cash that often, but plastic, you know, card, your card. So, that when our boat launch folks come in there to pay their six bucks, instead of finding, writing a check or trying to scrounge up six dollars in change or bills, they can just run their card right there. And we're gonna have two machines there, but we'll also have a fee tube for those folks who still have cash or check. Now, we're looking at doing that down the road out there at Huckleberry, too. Right now, it's just cash or check at Huckleberry for folks to pay.
Don't you have like a phone line to do that, though?
You did, yes, sir. We have a hard line in, so we have, we don't, we don't have cell coverage there, so we're thinking that, we're still working on the logistics there, but that's down the road, and we'll certainly keep you, keep you in the loop there. So, as of now, and they're expensive, too, to put in these two machines at Blackwell, it's gonna be about thirty-five thousand dollars to put in those two machines, there's a lot of like...
That's a lot of boat launches.
Yeah. But we think we're gonna get better compliance.
Oh, yeah.
And over, I don't know, probably five years, they'll pay for themselves, I think. And it'll save our time, too, cause we right now have to collect all these fee envelopes and then take them to the office, and we have a couple people who will spend, during the summer when there's a bazillion people going in there, they spend an entire day counting the receipts from Huckleberry, from MICA, from Blackwell, from all these other fee sites, so we think they'll pay for itself.
You say someone had to drive around and collect them?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, so I see there's more savings than just, yeah, okay.
Unfortunately, we've also had some problems with people stealing money out of these fee tubes. And down there at Huckleberry, we had that happen a couple times this past year. Which, there's not that money, we try to collect the fees during the summer, every day or every other day, so it's not like they're hitting a bonanza, per se. There must be some desperation or something. We're scratching our heads on that one. Again, these machines, you can't, there's no like, so that, that'll help them, too.
How far ahead do you have to Hurricane Baker Reservation for Huckleberry, that phone line?
Oh, boy, I think, I think you can do that months in advance. Months, we're just now getting this system up, so it's still being tested, so it's not available yet. It's still being tested right now, but we expect in the next few weeks that we'll have it up and running. Once it's up and running, from what I hear, even during the dead of winter, you can start making reservations.
Yeah, the one down on the Orchard Reservoir, you can make reservations, like you said, in December, January for the summer.
Okay.
So, that's kinda, we're moving into the twenty-first century ever so slowly there. The reservations now, now the issues.
So is Benoit County, trying.
It's a slow process, though, and it takes money, though, to do that, which we don't have a lot of budget. Again, we do the best we can with whatever we get in terms of funding, and it's pretty much flat or declining. But we do, we're proud that we do a good job with what we have here. We're very efficient. And then I threw some things in on miscellaneous here. Now, I mentioned this last year, that with this administration and Secretary Zinke has been, he resigned, but we're back to what I call classic multiple use, which is what I grew up with in this outfit, where we look at all, everything from one end of the spectrum to the other. Timber sales, livestock grazing, mining, recreation, everything under the gap. And we feel that that's the law, and we're very comfortable with that mandate. We're very comfortable with that in the Bureau. We've been doing it since nineteen forty-six, so nothing new. Seems like with each administration, things get tweaked a little bit, and there's more emphasis one way or the other, but it's classic multiple use right now. We're great with that, and we try to be as transparent as we can. If any of you gentlemen ever have any questions regarding, or issues with the BLM, you have my phone number and Debbie Paul, who's my primary assistant, you can call me day or night, weekday, weekends, it doesn't matter. And if that means we come on down here and meet ya, we'll do it. And I'm sincere about that, too. So, don't hesitate to contact us if there's any issues that you need to get untangled that involves us. Just some folks here, David Bernhardt, he's our acting secretary of interior, he has been nominated to, by the president, to fill in behind Secretary Zinke, who we talked, who resigned in January. And then our director is a fellow by name of Brian Steed. He's a political appointee. He's actually our deputy director for policy and ops, but he's performing the duties as our national director. It's like the forest service chief, except the difference is our director is a political appointee, the forest service chief is not. So, our director has to be nominated to and approved by the Senate, so little difference there. And I threw this in because most federal agencies get beat up, and rightfully so, because we're so inefficient. But we actually make money for the taxpayers. We get appropriated about one-point-four billion dollars, which is a lot of money, but we actually bring back into the US Treasury and send it to the states and counties between four and five billion. So, we make money for the taxpayers, primarily through oil and gas receipts, coal leases, sand and gravel, timber receipts, grazing receipts and the like. But to be, in all fairness, and it's primarily the oil and gas leases, there's a lot of money that's made there. And so that money comes back, so believe it or not, we actually pay for our existence in that.
Unusual.
It's very unusual. So, that is, that's all I have at this point, if you have any questions for me at this point. And again, I'm not gonna be around here forever. My plan, but it may slip a little bit, is December I'll be retiring. But I'll, you'll know well in advance, and so there won't be any surprises there. I, I turned sixty-two in December, I have grandkids all over the place, and my wife wants to visit them. But I may hang on.
You'll have to get one of those big monster motor ones, Adam.
I've drawn the line there. I'm not getting one of those things. Nope, we may get a little one, but I'm not gonna get it.
Not gonna get a forty footer, huh?
Oh, my gosh, no, that's, they're expensive for one thing, and I, I don't know, we'll always have a house. You know, that's just not my cup of tea.
We really don't have much land, BLM land in Benoit County anyway, do we?
No, it's about fourteen thousand acres up there in the northeast corner of the county, that's it. Then we have a couple little parcels along the St. Joe River, Huckleberry being one. Huckleberry being one, then there's a couple other little parcels down, or further off stream, I should say. Which, and that, that's a good point, we are actually looking at, very preliminary right now, putting in another campground or two down the road on those other parcels.
That's good, though.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
That's good, that's, that's, that's what we need.
That's good.
Yums.
Yep.
You know, the, the guys are great to work with.
Thank you.
Especially you, over the years.
Thank you.
Really. We will miss you, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, that, that's very kind of you. So, we, we do the best we can, and, but we, we make mistakes like anyone, but we...
It's only somebody that don't make mistakes and ain't doing anything, huh?
That's true. Yeah, um, oftentimes, that's the best way to learn, is actually doing it.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I won't take any more of your time if, unless you have anything for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, very well. Nice to meet you, sir. Good seeing you, sir. Good seeing you, sir.
What do we got, again?
Um, executive session?
Okay.